For August 6th at 7:00 PM exactly, all council members are present. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'm actually going to... I'm not going to that. So this is one of my favorite parts. I actually get to come off of here because we have an awesome special presentation for today. So I'm going to ask the members of the Parker Team Court to join me up here. And Carolyn, and Judge, you want to join us too? We don't ever get to see you here, so you know, may as well get you down here while we're here. That's good. All right. So we are pleased to announce that Parker Team Court has received the distinguished honor of hosting the 9/11 Flag of Honor Across America Memorial Ceremony on September 11th of 2021. So our Team Court, which you see members of up here, were selected as one of 100 communities across the country to lead this inaugural event. And what this event is, during the memorial, our group here is going to be reading the names of 50 of the 2,983 victims' names that were killed during the 9/11 attacks. They're going to read a short biographical sketch of each person, and then will conclude at the memorial out there by raising the 9/11 flag that was gifted to the town. And Carolyn, do you have that flag today that they received?
I have it.
Okay, so you all can see it at some point. So the 9/11 Flag of Honor was created by the Flag of Heroes Project. The flag is created from the names of those who died in the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, United Flight 175 and 93, and American Flight 11 and 77, so they will never be forgotten. This event's open to the public. Again, it's going to be here on September 11th from 10:00 AM, and so at 10:00 AM, and then they're going to start reading the names at 10:03 and 11 seconds, specific to the time the Flight 90 Street crashed in Pennsylvania. And that'll be the opening statements and when we start to read the names. So I want to present the Team Court with this special certificate of recognition for being selected for this great honor. And for those of you who haven't heard of what our Team Court does, it's an amazing group. These are a relative sample of our Team Courts, but it's peers working with peers to help them all have a better future. So thank you, guys. You can't be a Team then, are you?
No.
Okay. My eyes are changing. So the certificate of recognition awarded to the Parker Team Court for being selected to host the 9/11 Flag Across America Memorial Ceremony, signed by me on August 16th of 2021. So thank you very much. So you got to put me in the picture, guys.
Hey, wait a minute.
No, no.
He doesn't want to be in there?
He's undercover.
You know, kids look younger every day, so I just wanted to check with that young man. But he'll be here on September 11th. We'll see you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, our next item up is public comments. Public comment is an opportunity for the town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes, and each individual will be given three minutes to speak. We have three ways that you can make public comments in the room here. You can email the town clerk's office by 5:00 on the day of the meeting, and then we also have via Zoom. So while Donette is checking on Zoom, I have in the room Mr. Jewett. If you'd like to come down, Mr. Jewett, if you'll state your name and address for the record, and I will give you three minutes for your public comment.
Okay. Yes, my name is Steve Jewett, and I own a home in Parker at 12521 South Sopras Creek Drive.
Go ahead, sir.
I would like to speak just very briefly about some of the issues on Matsumbaka Road. And first, I want to acknowledge that the Town Council has been working on the issue, and we appreciate the efforts to try to resolve some of the issues on Matsumbaka. The issue I wanted to speak about is not so much the traffic noise, the truck construction traffic, and that sort of thing that I think most people have been speaking about, but more the safety issues on Matsumbaka Road. As you probably know, Matsumbaka Road, at least between Stroh and Hess Road, is a road with a couple turns and dips, and at least one partially hidden intersection at French Creek. And most of the traffic is traveling on Matsumbaka above the speed limit, some quite a bit above the speed limit. And I think that's at least partially due to the fact that the vast majority of that traffic is not local traffic. It's people most likely that live well south of Parker and that are using Matsumbaka to either bypass Parker Road or in lieu of Chambers Road, which has yet to be completed. But because of the speed and the tremendous increase in the volume on Matsumbaka Road, the intersection at French Creek has become particularly dangerous, in my opinion. I have personally witnessed one accident at that intersection. Fortunately, no one appeared to be seriously hurt, although one vehicle seemed to be a complete loss. A neighbor at the corner of Matsumbaka and French Creek had a, just last December, had a vehicle crash through the rear fence into his backyard, took out a tree. Another neighbor a little bit south on Matsumbaka had a similar experience. A vehicle crashed through the fence into the backyard, actually caught fire, and the fire department had to come and put the fire out. And those are just a few examples. So I think there are some serious safety issues on Matsumbaka Road, both for vehicles traveling on that road and pedestrians. And I'd like to suggest three things that can be done. One is to install a traffic light at French Creek. Number two is to reduce the speed limit on Matsumbaka to 35 miles an hour from the current 40. And three would be to ask the police department to vigorously enforce the speed limits on Matsumbaka Road. That's it. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Excellent. Thanks, Mr. Jewett.
Good to see you.
All right. Are there any other public comments in the room? Seeing none. Donette, do we have any public comments on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, just raise your hand, please. No comments.
Okay. And we did receive one via electronic means by James Cahillan on Domingo Court regarding the speed over in that area. So thank you all very much. We'll move to the next item. Reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Council. I am going to start with Mr. Brewfest to my right. Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of my duties as a liaison for the Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable, there was a meeting a few weeks ago, and the organization will be meeting in September with flight schools in relation to aircraft noise. Also, there are plans to hold an educational session in October with a focus on the design capabilities and usage of a noise monitor system and its available data. In addition, I'm also a liaison for the Parker Senior Center, and they're having a Killwinds fundraiser next week, August 24th, so I will be there for that, because I like ice cream, and our seniors. Also, they have an open air market Saturday, September 11th, where visitors can browse goods sold by local artisans, crafters, vendors, and more. I'd like to point out, Parker Task Force had a food drive last Saturday, and the community really stepped up their game. They had 367 cases of food collected, which is really good. And then finally, yesterday at the farmer's market, we had a Let's Talk Parker booth, and I got to meet citizens with pretty much a lot of people here on the dais. So thank you.
Busy man, busy man. Councilmember Pogue? Okay, Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too was at the Let's Talk Parker booth. We did it also in July, and definitely look for them next year, not just at the farmer's market. We hope to be out at maybe some concerts or different opportunities to touch your council one-on-one and get some answers. I look forward to hearing from the citizens, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to get to know each other, if you will. This is the busy week. I haven't done anything, I didn't do much last week, but Week 3 is always busy. I think we have the big picture staff-wise. Coming up on Wednesday, employee picnic on Thursday, is that right? And then some more meetings coming up. But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Dyak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here. Dr. Cog. We had a work session dealing with, we're discussing greenhouse gas transportation rulemaking. This was more of an update by Dr. Cog's staff. There are some Senate rules, 1260 bills, I'm sorry, 1260, 1261, which we have to at least keep tabs on to see how that affects future planning and future transportation. We also, at the Performance and Engagement Subcommittee, which I'm a part of, discussed how to allocate Dr. Cog representation on the Front Range Passenger Rail Board. We also elected to postpone our board workshop from the end of August until early in 2022. This was, again, a little bit of a concern about the Delta variant, in addition to we just changed our fiscal year to mid-year to match up with the state. So just from more of a strategic planning and more of a budget situation, it'd just be a whole lot better the first quarter or so of the year. E470, we had an executive committee discussion. We reviewed the audit results of the executive contracts. We had a board meeting dealing largely with dashboards, financial operations. The operational dashboard was the first of its kind, and Douglas County Commissioner George Teal loved it. So if George Teal loves it, we like it too. We also had the Parker Brewfest, and congrats to Councilmember Hendricks. He was a large part of getting all those brewers to come to Parker so we can raise money for good causes here around town. And I, along with largely most council members and mayor here, participated in the Sunday Connect with Council or Let's Talk Parker tent at the farmer's market. I largely dealt with transportation trivia and questions. So to me, keep them coming, and I appreciate everybody that came out and had questions for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, it was a busy week. I attended the Discovery Park Summer Concert, which was the first one I'd been to, so it was great. I did a ride-along with the deputy chief building official, and I also attended the Let's Talk Parker. And I thought it was a great experience for me because I got to listen to my former, my fellow council members, and kind of I learned a lot. But I was also really excited to see there were so many people that wanted to fill out, we had these little hearts that you could put on why you loved Parker, and it was a full board. And I will be attending my first Douglas County Housing Authority meeting next week. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, it was great to be back after my trip to Arizona. I did have a great visit to the Parker Senior Center today and renewed my membership there, and just checked on how they were getting along and they're back in action. So it's great to see that. I did visit the leadership of the Rockies Institute and mingled there with leaders from all over the state. And I did talk to some local constituents about what Mr. Tom Jarrett brought up tonight about Matsumbaka Road, and would like to say that some of the constituents I talked to did reiterate Tom's three suggestions as well for improvements on Matsumbaka Road.
Great, thank you. And for me, just a couple of items. We had on Friday, we had leaders from the Denver Metro Economic Development out here to take a tour of Parker. They didn't realize how big we were, so it's good to have them out here so we can get on their list of who to know and who to start bragging about. And Beau went out there with me, so thank you for attending that with me, Beau. Let's see. Just a reminder, the Congressional Redistricting Commission meets in Highlands Ranch on Wednesday. So if you're interested in making public comment about why Parker should not be split in half between CD6 and CD7, you'll want to check your calendars and be out there. And lastly, I'll be attending, is it Parker Quest with the Historical Foundation? And I've been asked to play Charlie O'Brien, who is known as the honorary mayor of Parker. So he was the honorary mayor before Parker had a mayor, so it should be fun. So make sure you mark those on your calendars. A lot of good, good fun stuff coming up. So speaking of fun stuff, we have an exciting presentation now. So Mary Lou, do you want to come up and introduce your guest? Oh, Rhonda's coming up. So we've got the presentation of the financial statements. Kind of feels like they should be brought in on a big thing.
I agree.
Maybe an arc, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rhonda Willie, Controller for the Town of Parker. Per Section 915 of the Town Charter, we are required to do an annual audit. This year, we engaged with Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, to do an audit of the financial statements, an audit of the cultural fund statements for the SCFD grant, and also a single audit because we expended more than $750,000 of federal funding. The cultural fund financials have been reported into the SCFD. The town financials have been filed with GFOA and the state auditor, and the single audit has been filed now with the Federal Audit Clearing House. So I emailed you the financial statements on Friday with the governance letter. The link to that statement, the email, will open up the financials. It's also on the Parker internet, parkeronline.org, on the financial page. And the final step of the audit is for the auditor, Paul, this is Paul, our auditor, with Clifton Larson Allen, and he'll be giving you a quick overview of how the audit went.
Excellent. Thanks, Rhonda. Welcome, Paul.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council. Paul Niedemuller with Clifton Larson Allen. Thank you, Rhonda, so much for the introduction. And I feel like I have that time right there, so I'm going to make this brief.
You get at least 3:30, so you're good.
3:30, okay. I appreciate it. We started the process back in November, December of 2020 and culminated in July of 2021. Our audit process was gone through, that governance letter that Rhonda emailed you. And if you like Cliff Notes and kind of not reading the whole novel, that's where I would go to find out what transpired during the audit process. And I'm just going to summarize our relationship with you as a client, as well as management, and any interactions that we hit. So number one, we did not have any disagreements, which is a very positive thing. So if we had disagreements, we'd have to come and say, hey, we couldn't agree on things, and this is what the management thinks, and this is what the auditor thinks. We did not have any adjustments. We implemented, or the town implemented, all four required governmental accounting standards boards pronouncements, which is a good thing. So your financial statements are different than the prior year, because if you recall, in the prior year, because of COVID-19, GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, pushed out the standards for one more year. So again, you had a lot of more work to do because you had two years of accounting standards. So again, big props to your finance team for implementing those four standards. And then finally, we did not have any items that we think that brought to your attention from any changes in accounting policies that don't need the standards or anything that you need to be aware of in terms of changes that were made to your financial statements as you compare them to the previous year. On page 26 to 28, it takes us three pages to get through our audit opinion, and what we basically did is give you a clean opinion, all material respect. So again, congratulations to the council for your stewardship and governance over the financial activities of the Town of Parker. And you know, within the financial statements themselves, as Rhonda alluded to, you did receive federal funds in the current period. So that threshold, the $750,000, and you in fact got almost $2.8 million of coronavirus relief funds. Those funds came with strings attached, which the federal government requires you to spend them appropriately in accordance with their standards as a matter of record for receiving those funds. Our job was to go in to evaluate your compliance with usage of those funds, and we're here to report we did not have any findings or recommendations as a result of your stewardship over the federal funds for the year ended 12/31/2020. At this point, I will pause, and I would address, happy to address any specific questions you have as your external independent auditor, and stand for any questions.
Awesome. Well, we're going to do a reverse order show. Councilmember Hefta, any questions on the audit?
No, thank you for your presentation, and I think it's just a testament to how professional the employees and the directors are in the Town of Parker with the stewardship of our funds. So it's really the thank you to them, the directors and the leaders of the Town of Parker, and thank you for your audit.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrington?
Thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you. Councilmember Dyak?
You know, it's hard to make audit fun, isn't it?
We try. We try.
Oh, man. No, I think it's great. I mean, you know, I think we're blessed to have the team that we have here at the Town of Parker, the consistency and the dedication of our staff members within the Finance Department. And it's always great to hear that there's a clean opinion and there are no concerns. And to me, that's just, you know, typical. In my nine years here, I haven't heard anything different, and it's just, it's not to our stewardship or governance, it's to their effort and attention to detail. So thanks to the staff.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo Councilman Dyak's statement. You know, sitting up here for nine years, we've had clean opinion the whole time, and it definitely probably goes back prior to that. And thankfully, there are some people that find passion in numbers, and they work for us. It says a lot about this organization, especially the Finance Department. We are, as an organization, the stewards of the taxpayers' investment, and I'm very, very proud to sit up here and take ownership of that, because you guys do an incredible job. So well done, yet again.
Councilmember Pogue?
Thank you. I think it's great to have a really positive report. It just reinforces the fact that we have excellent staff. And I think their work is an example of things that Parker do all the way around. And I appreciate you presenting an outside opinion coming and saying, hey, you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I just echo what everyone else said. I love the transparency, and thank you.
Excellent. Nothing for me?
Well, you were trying to make it exciting with some questions, some dialogue. And I just want to close and thank your staff as well for their professionalism throughout the audit process and their transparency through and through. So thank you very much, and you guys all have a great night.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. All right, we will move on to item number six, the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion for consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for an individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for a discussion. So council, before you have items 6A through E.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve items 6A through 6E, please.
A second.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we remove an item first.
Okay, let me back up and ask if there's any questions on the consent agenda before. So Cheryl, do you have a?
I do. Item E is a huge amount of money that we're approving, and to me, it's a transparency and government issue that we do not have it presented at the open Town Council meeting. And therefore, I'm requesting that it be removed from the consent agenda.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to remove those items in item E.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, there's a motion on the floor, sir.
Okay, so we sped into the motion before I could ask for any questions on it. So there's, Cheryl's made a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, there's a second. As stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, I would agree with Councilmember Pogue that the information on contracts and how the town spends its money should be discussed at Town Council meetings. I would agree with Councilmember Pogue. I second.
Yep. So there's been a motion made and seconded to remove item E from the consent agenda. Do we need electronic vote or voice vote? Okay. So please vote when prompted to do so on that motion.
Is it, Mr. Mayor, point of order, I'm wondering the order of process here. We have a motion that I stated to pass all. I would, we could discuss rescinding said motion, or we could call the vote on that motion first, sir?
So I usually ask if there's any questions on the consent agenda, so that was a little fast.
So there is a motion and a second that's on the table, so that needs to be withdrawn.
Yep. So we're voting on the motion proposed by Councilmember Pogue and seconded by Councilmember Hefta.
But the first motion was from?
We're doing it, we're doing it on the contracts, and we'll figure it out the rest of the way.
Yeah, I, for reverence of the room, I move, I will rescind.
Will you rescind yours?
I rescind my motion, but I will state my disappointment in the order. I didn't, I looked at Councilwoman Pogue, I'm going to take a moment here of liberty. I looked at Councilwoman Pogue, waited for her, saw- I looked at Councilwoman Pogue, waited for her, saw her. She did not seem to be waking a motion, so I made the motion. So I would say that Councilwoman Pogue, if you're looking to make a motion, you need to be ready to make a motion at said time.
I wanted him to.
It's not his role, ma'am.
So I appreciate that. So council, well, thank you, Councilmember Rivero, for rescinding your motion. And if we can vote on?
I need a second to also consent to rescind. Okay, thank you.
Did all the votes come through? Because it disappeared off my screen.
Your vote's logged.
Okay.
Do we have all the votes logged on that one? And that motion fails two to four with Councilmembers Dyak, Hendricks, Rivero, and Barrington voting no. Councilmember Rivero, would you like to restate your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. I move to approve consent agenda items 6A through 6E, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks?
I'll second.
All right. Motion is made by Councilmember Rivero, signed by Councilmember Hendricks to approve the consent agenda. Please vote when prompted. And that motion passes five to one with Councilmember Pogue voting no. Next up is public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a statement, sir? I just would want to fill in. I fully agree with Councilwoman Hefta and Councilwoman Pogue. It is a lot of money that we are spending. And you did hear earlier testimony to how well and how great stewards we are. This item was discussed during our study session. For any folks interested, and please, going over these contracts, tune in the week prior because we go over them in depth. So please, 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 this is not something we're rushing by you. We go in these in depth. We look at these contracts. We talk about them in our work-study sessions, and they're covered very, very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the floor.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item number seven on public hearings. First one is public hearing number A, Old Town Apartments at Parker F2, Sketch and Preliminary Plan. Hey, Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good, good. So just for everyone, and council, you have your primer here on public hearings, just so we can make sure that we're going in order. So we're going to open up the public hearing. We'll hear from our staff. Council, you'll have a chance to ask staff questions on the items in front of you, which is the Sketch and Preliminary Plan out at Old Town. Then we'll bring it to the applicant, which I assume the applicant is here tonight to make a presentation. Council will have a chance to talk to you about it, answer any questions. And then we'll bring it back to staff for last comment. We'll open it up for public testimony from anyone from the public that wishes to. Then we will bring it back to the council at that point for any debate, and then a final vote. Everybody clear on what we're doing? And for the presenter, for staff, if we, if the council gives you a question that is not within the scope of what you want, if you will punt that to the town administrator's office, she'll make a note of it, and we'll get that answer back at a later date. Everybody good? All right, so I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I was trying to see if it'd be 7:30 exactly, so, you know. But we'll open the public hearing at 7:29. And Stacy, you can take it from there.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So this evening, the applicant has requested a sketch and preliminary plan for 122 single-family attached units with parks, open space, and landscaping, as well as two commercial lots on approximately 15.369 acres within the Old Town at Parker Plan Development. The site is located on the south side of Main Street between Jordan Road and Motzenbacher Road. The subject area is bounded on the east by the American Academy at Motzenbacher School and to the west by the Main Street Dental Plaza Commercial Development. To the north of the site is the Clark Farms Single Family Residential Neighborhood, and to the south is the Old Town, also known as Cinderos Creek, neighborhood that is currently under construction. The Old Town at Parker property was annexed in December 2000 with a planned development zoning that provided for 5.5 acres of commercial area and 595 residential units. In 2003, the PD was amended, and a sketch and preliminary plans were approved that enlarged the commercial area to 13.35 acres. The residential development under the previous PD was also reorganized to create a central park and community pool area. Construction of the western half of the PD ceased in 2008 with the economic downturn, but has since been largely developed. In 2017, the eastern half of the original development was approved for single-family detached and paired homes and is currently under construction. On December 7, 2020, the third amendment to the Old Town at Parker Plan Development was approved to allow for single-family attached or town home development for a total of 122 units at a density of 10 units per acre. The PD plan is shown on the screen. The area in red is the area contained within the sketch and preliminary plan that is proposed tonight. The area highlighted in yellow is the residential area, and the area highlighted in blue is the commercial area. The proposed sketch and preliminary plan would allow for 122 single-family attached or town home lots on 12.16 acres. Additionally, the plat will reconfigure two commercially zoned lots and reclaim 1.86 acres of the adjacent drainage tract through reengineering. These two commercial lots and the drainage tract will be removed from filing number one and replatted into filing number two. Access will be provided through the site with the extension of Springfield Court from the residential area of Old Town to the south through the development and into the commercial businesses. This is represented by the blue line on the map. Springfield Court from the north will dead-end at the edge of the property, avoiding through traffic from Clark Farms. This is represented by the purple box at the top of the map. Internal drives or alleys will connect the main through roads to all of the residential units, as well as into the commercial areas. All proposed streets within the Old Town at Parker filing number two Sketch and Preliminary Plan will be private drives. These private drives will conform to the Town of Parker criteria, but will be owned and maintained privately by either a Metro District or Homeowners Association. The development is required to provide an additional 1.7 acres of park space. The applicant is proposing to meet this requirement by strategically locating parks throughout the residential portion of the Sketch and Preliminary Plan. The development will include several park amenities to satisfy the required park dedication requirements. A one-acre playground active park area is proposed within the center of the development. It will consist of primarily active play elements. This includes a playground, workout stations, a playing field, along with shelter and seating. In addition, the applicant is proposing a community garden at the northeast corner of the property. All additional requirements, including building setbacks, heights, architecture, landscaping, and design, will be reviewed as part of a future site plan application. So staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. All plating requirements of the Old Town at Parker Plan Development and the land development ordinance have been satisfied. The proposal provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. Utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. All referral comments have been addressed or will be addressed at the time of the final plat. All public notice requirements have been satisfied. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on June 1, 2021 to present their sketch and preliminary plan to the surrounding neighbors. And then the Planning Commission heard this application on July 22, 2021, and recommended unanimous approval. So therefore, staff is recommending that town council approve the Old Town at Parker filing number two Sketch and Preliminary Plan, subject to the four conditions contained within the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available tonight, does have a presentation for you, and that is it. I'm available for any questions you may have.
We're going to questions with you first. Some, let's start down at my right. Councilmember Rivero, any questions on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. Just my first question, my first notice in reviewing this over the weekends, we've lost the, what I call, the stub to the north. Paoli Way, or whatever we're calling it, Spring something now. But that's no longer on the table. And I will say that I'm happy we don't have the bleed over between the two. Is that correct?
That is correct. So they, the applicant has just dead-ended that at the property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, thank you. I do have a question. And as I was going through this, some of the files keep hanging up, so I'm going to just simply ask for clarification. I noticed at one point in time, and there is a cell tower there, and that's in an easement, but it was saying it wasn't recorded. That doesn't necessarily invalidate the easement, does it?
No, and the cell tower will remain. It'll be placed within a tract within the subdivision.
Okay, who owns that cell tower?
That we will have to ask the applicant.
Okay, so we'll hold that one for the applicant.
Thank you.
Sure, anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Other than what's the stub, I'll add no questions.
Councilmember Dyak, do you know what the stub is?
I have no questions, and I'm not going to ask because I'll go off on a tangent, I'm sure.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great, thank you. All right, applicant, welcome down, sir. And if you will state your name and address, and we will give you up to 30 minutes for your presentation. I know.
Good evening. My name is Bill Maher. I'm with Norris Design at 8024, excuse me, 1101 Banning Street, Denver, 8024.
Great. The big question is, do you know what the stub is?
I was, I do know what the stub is. So I'm happy to answer questions about the infamous stub.
All right, he'll get to it then.
We did cover the stub quite a bit through this process.
Yes, we did. Just a moment as I get something set up here.
I won't count that in as part of your 30 minutes.
Good evening, council members. As I mentioned, my name is Bill Maher, and we're happy to be here tonight. I'm joined by the applicant and property owner, Brian Beiler. And next slide, please. And attending virtually tonight are my team members, the project civil engineer, project landscape architect and architect, and our transportation planner. Next slide. And I just have a few slides tonight. I want to thank Ms. Njerjer for her thorough presentation and her help, as well as Mr. Matthews and Brianna for their help with this project over the past couple of years. But our three slides really consist just of the background of this project. I did mention to the Planning Commission that we are very proud of the work we have done with the Cinderos Creek neighborhood. We've been working on this project for over three years. It's been a bit of a slog at times. And we have engaged the neighbors quite often. We've had over seven neighborhood meetings. As Ms. Njerjer mentioned, the PD was approved for the zoning last December. And we were also before you the previous year. And based on those, that decision at that time, we've changed our land use pattern, and consequently, it was approved by this body. And we've also, I wanted to show you a few slides of previous commitments that our client has done for this neighborhood over the past few years, and also the drainage improvements that will not only serve this neighborhood, but will also improve the drainage for the neighboring neighborhood of Clark Farms. Next slide. And this is just the timeline of the development in the neighborhood. We worked on the initial approvals on the east half of the neighborhood that were approved in 2018, as you see in the map in front of you. And then we also worked on the approval of the pool and clubhouse, which the previous developer walked away, I think, in approximately 2008. And we were fortunate enough to work with the neighborhood over a couple of years to have that approved and opened last year. Next slide. And just a few more points about specific improvements within the neighborhood that went above and beyond that was asked with our land use applications through conversations with the neighborhood, with the HOA members, the Metro District members, and with staff. We worked on replacing trees that were damaged over the years that were initially planted back in the early 2000s, just to provide some good faith. We also replaced the neighborhood signage that goes all throughout the neighborhood. So it has a new, fresh look and a new brand. Next slide. And this is just an image of the pool that we're very proud of, and it opened just late August last year. Next slide. And as Ms. Njerjer mentioned, we work very closely with staff to exceed the park amenities that are proposed with this neighborhood. And we work closely with the neighborhood as well at various neighborhood meetings and asking them what kind of amenities they like to see. Next slide. And this is just another slide showing what some of those amenities will be about. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, I think I will start, did I start with you last time first?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start on this side then. Councilmember Barrington?
Any questions of the applicant?
No questions right now, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, so the seven neighborhood meetings, you got a chance to take the input from the surrounding neighbors and have some good discussion. That's a lot of meetings, but could you elaborate a little bit?
Sure, absolutely. Some of the meetings started back in 2018 when we first started our application. And they involved, we've had meetings with large attendance of up to 40 people at the public library just around the corner. And, you know, they were to foster dialogue and show the plans that we had in place and kind of build some support. And over time, we really got to know some of the members of the neighborhood. It's been, I think, a really good process. At the hearing last year, we heard from neighbors at the town council hearing that were dissatisfied on some of the things that we were proposing, even though we were transparent all along. And so we listened to them, and we had a meeting shortly thereafter. And I think it was very productive. And then we just had one this past June, as Ms. Njerjer mentioned. And I think we had approximately, maybe up to 20 people, 15 to 20, attending that one. And we really like to be transparent with them. And we're going to continue working with them as the subdivision is built out and as we, you know, complete this process. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I would like to go back to the cell tower question.
Sure.
Because it's been there for an awful long time. I think ever since cell phones were coming out. And it says it's being vacated by the plat. How are you handling that? What are you doing, and who's the owner of the tower?
The owner of the tower is Crown Castle, and they have a long-term lease with my client, Mr. Beiler, who owns the underlying property. And so they have the right to be there for many years. And with regard to vacation of anything, it's not being, the easement for it is not being vacated. There may be some line for it that serves it, that is being realigned. But by no means is it moving, is it going anywhere.
Okay, well, that's what I was a little bit concerned about.
Sure, I can understand that.
Know who's it was, so thank you.
Councilmember Rivero?
No questions. I just, I will acknowledge the hard work that went into this. I'm glad to be here today.
Great, Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions either, but I've been following this for a while, and I appreciate the transparency and communication, rather, with the neighborhoods and the changes you've made.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go to the public comment portion of this public hearing. So thank you, sir. But we're going to call you back up here if there's any public comments that we need for you to have a chance to address. So if anybody in the room would like to address this issue, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, Danette, do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to make a public comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay, with that, we will end the public comment portion of this. Nothing for you to address, Mr. Maher, on those public comments. And then, so I am going to go ahead and close this public hearing at 7:44. We're going to bring it back to council, and we're going to ask you for some debate time. So this is your chance to opine on this issue, so, like that word. Councilmember Hendricks, I'll start with you.
Nothing related to debate. Like I said, I've followed this project for a while, and before I was a council member, and I appreciate the changes and listening to the neighborhoods, neighbors around the area. And any neighborhood that has a Todd Road next to it must be cool, so.
Councilmember Pogue?
Just have a question on what you changed, because before, there was a lot of development right up along Main Street there. Did you go through a process? Because what I see down here is a lot of the streets coming in further south of that. Was that as a result of meeting with the HOAs?
Yep, so we've, so the questions have ended. So now we just need to.
We can chat.
Yeah. Unless it's for Josh.
Yeah. Well, I don't know that this issue was addressed, so do you know the answers to it?
Can, let's see, let's frame it in a question. So what do you, what do you?
The change in the layout of the building that they want to put in the building envelope. So was that as a result of the meetings with the HOAs?
Well, we can't speak to their opinion. I will state that they've been very, very involved with the public. They were very, very involved with the town staff, and they took the comments that they heard at the last hearing and, under our denial, and came back with what we asked for that changed the, first of all, the density, and second of all, the height on some of the buildings.
Well, and I would agree. And I think, you know, the revisions that they've done, since there's nobody here from the neighboring subdivisions, obviously that you met their needs. I just wanted to point that out.
Good, good point out. Councilmember Rivero?
Yeah, I'd echo what I just said. I appreciate the hard work. I know that sometimes a common belief is that we have to approve everything. And unfortunately, Senteros Creek found out that we don't always approve everything, and I thank you guys for sticking with it. I thank you for working through it. I thank staff for working through it, and I thank the neighbors for being vocal and speaking up. And I think this is a success story. With that, for the record, I find this sketch and preliminary plan to be consistent with the master plan, answering both medium-density residential and will soon to address neighborhood centers with the commercial plots. It creates a buffer or transition which is asked for in our master plan between commercial and residential. I found it is consistent with the land development ordinance and the applied zoning. Lastly, I find the traffic access and circulation to be plenty adequate, but also built not to encourage non-local traffic, but encourage local traffic within the plan. The trail system, lastly, will link to our already beneficial trail system and only add to it, so thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, no, I think when we last saw the applicant, it was a little bit more challenging. We had a lot more people into Councilmember Pogue's observation. There's really nobody in opposition here. The comments back then, you know, one comment that stuck with me was, we're looking for more of a traditional house with garages, and I see little pictures that are pretty consistent with that. So, you know, I think, to the applicant's credit, under trying times of when we last saw them, they went back to the drawing board, they engaged the community. They've obviously listened, they've framed something consistent with what we were asking them to do. And, you know, just FYI, they've always been attentive, even before this project. There was some single-family residential to the south of American Academy. One of the things that I experienced personally in previous, you know, previous situations such as that, where some of the fencing were blowing down and being inattentive, I went every single day. And that fence was up, and the kids were, you know, were fenced off from the construction site. So to me, I mean, again, it's just the applicant being attentive, or their developer, or their home builders being attentive to us, the community, and greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I wasn't involved in the past discussions, but I definitely followed it, and I know that there were some neighbors that weren't very happy with the original plans, and so I thank you for taking the time to meet with them so many times, and for your transparency, and for really listening. And I appreciate the fact that you did go above and beyond with the amenities, the park amenities, and the proposed community garden. I don't think that's done yet, but it, maybe it is? Sorry, not asking questions, comment.
You're okay.
But the proposed density is allowed, there's, looks like there's adequate access, setbacks. It's consistent with the 2035 master plan. I think it, every, looks like, looks great.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah, I'm just impressed that you took the time to listen to the neighborhoods and to understand what the community wanted in that area, and that you were able to come to an effective agreement about what design and what sketch and what plan really belongs in that part of town. So I too had listened and was on the, as a citizen, was on the call when 30 people did get on that one town council meeting and complained that they did not want condominiums in that area. So thank you for your hard work in really coming up with a new, great plan to satisfy the residents of the town of Parker, Colorado.
Great. With that, counsel, I'm going to entertain a motion on the subject.
I'll move to approve. Oops, I didn't pull it up, so.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I have to say all this, and I, I move to approve based on staff findings with the following conditions contained in the staff report. One, all final plats shall be substantially similar in design and layout and inclusion of amenities to this preliminary plan as determined by town staff. Two, the applicant shall add the IRA, I R E A note of all final plats for this development. Three, the applicant shall continue to work with Douglas County on street names and addresses which will be finalized at the time of any final plats for the property. And finally, four, the applicant shall meet required setbacks, stagger, and zoning as stated with the Old Town at Parker Plan Development Guide and Plan and the Parker Land Development Ordinance.
Nicely done. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Pogue. Motion is made by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Please vote when prompted.
See that three times fast.
You did well.
Might pass out.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, for your attendance. We appreciate it. And good luck on the project. We'll look forward to it. We'll look forward to the stub, too, whatever that is. Still don't know. Still don't know. All right, Brianna Simon, you're back.
Yes, I'm back.
You're just continuing to be back. All right. So this is a public hearing on the Oldie Town, Old Town, 1A, dang it, wounding, Amendment to Lot Four, used by special review for advanced pet care of Parker. So just to remind the council of the way we're going to proceed, we will hear a presentation from staff, we'll have questions of the staff, we'll hear a presentation by the applicant. Sorry, I assume that's you. You kind of look like a vet, so, yeah. So we'll have, by you, we'll have questions from the council, we'll have public comment, we'll allow the applicant to address any of that public comment to his project. We're going to close it for all questions at that point. We'll bring it back to the council for comments, opinions, debate, and then we'll proceed. So Brianna, again, I'll tell you like I told Stacy, if we get to something, you know, that's not within the scope of your project, we punt it over to the town administrator, and she'll take notes for us, and we'll get that answer back.
Perfect.
At a later date. So I'm going to open up the hearing at 7:53. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Perfect. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. This is a proposal for a use by special review to allow for a 5,000-square-foot veterinary hospital with a 300-square-foot outdoor area. The existing vet hospital is proposing to relocate into a freestanding building within the existing development. The subject property is located south of Main Street and east of Jordan Road. The property is located within the Old Town Plan Development Zone District, which requires a use by special review for vet hospitals. Advanced Pet Care of Parker has been in operation for the last 11 years. The town approved a use by special review for the existing location in 2009. With the proposed relocation, the applicant intends to build a new freestanding building that will consist of 5,000 square feet of indoor area and 300 square feet of outdoor area, offering full veterinary medical, dental, specialty service, and procedures. Advanced Pet Care will continue to operate between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, with clients dropping off and picking up during various times throughout the day. The facility will also continue to operate under the most recent operation manuals and maintain a clean facility. In the past five years, there have been no calls for enforcement or compliance cases filed against Advanced Pet Care at the existing location. If approved, the applicant will work with staff through the administrative site plan process for the new building. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. The use will be consistent with the surrounding area. The use will not result in overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. The project satisfies the nine criteria required in the land development ordinance for a use by special review, and all referral agency comments have been addressed. Planning commission heard this item on August 14th and recommended approval. Therefore, staff and planning commission recommend town council approve the use by special review for a vet hospital with the six conditions outlined in staff's report. Staff is available for any questions that council members may have, and the applicant is also president for operational questions.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Dyak, questions?
No, sir.
Councilmember Barrington? Councilmember Hefta?
No.
All right. Councilmember Hendricks? Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. So are you, is this applicant also looking for, you know, like boarding of pets, or is it strictly medical-related?
I will defer that question to the applicant.
All right.
He'll come up.
Yep. So when he gets up, we can ask that question of him.
Okay.
Anything else for staff on that one?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Rivero? Nothing? All right. Then we will get the applicant up here. Come on down, sir. If you will state your name and address for the record, and you already got the one question that you're going to get, so.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Sean Seibel, 17002 East Main Street, Unit J, in Parker. I will not take 30 minutes of your time, I hope. I'll take the mayor's comment as a compliment that I look like a vet. I hope that's a good thing.
I think it is.
Basically, as Brianna said, we've been open for 12 years, literally across the street. We're going to be, I guess, new neighbors of the last project. Nothing about it is changing, other than we're going to a bigger place. Nothing in our operations or anything else is changing. We do not do boarding, we do not do daycare, have no plans or desire to do so either. If you have any questions, I am here. That's my quick, quick presentation.
That was good. I couldn't even get my timer on there. Councilmember Pogue?
That's it? Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Rivero? Any questions of the applicant?
No, no questions. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hendricks?
You're a dog or cat person?
Well, both. I have barn cats and dogs.
Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
It's going to be one of those nights. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, sir. Well, if there's any public comment that comes up, we'll allow you to address that. So now we'll turn to the public comment aspect of this. Anyone in the room wishing to make public comment on this project? None? Danette, do we have anyone on Zoom?
If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand. No comments.
Okay. So we'll close the public comment piece of this, and then we will close the hearing for any other questions, unless there's any questions of the applicant or staff. Before we go? Okay. So we'll close the public hearing at 7:58. We'll bring it back to council for debates and opinions, and I'll start over with Councilmember Barrington.
I don't, I don't have anything to give.
Okay. Councilmember Hefta?
The only comment I would like to make is that when we evaluate something by special review, it is located in Title 13.04.200B, and it's called Criteria for Approval for Uses Permitted by Special Review. And there is an applicant analysis on these criteria, and there is also a staff analysis on these criteria. And so there's a lot of information that goes into this type of proposal that we do read. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Dyak?
No, I mean, just more of a comment, it's always nice to see businesses commit to Parker or flourish and need additional space, so kudos to what you're doing. It obviously has been successful, and I hope, hope it continues, and best, best of luck to you.
Great. Councilmember Pogue, any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Councilmember Rivero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will echo Councilman Dyak's point to see you grow within Parker, as outstanding to hear that you are a resident of Parker is even, even better. So, so well done. It's, it's, it's perfect. I find that you are consistent with the nine criteria required, required for a use by special review, specifically, one, harmony and compatibility with the surrounding area. Yeah, you exist before in the area, so I believe you're definitely harmonious. That one's, that one's well-stated. The biggest one, again, well, actually, the fourth one, will not have a material adverse effect on community capital or improvement. Actually, I find this quite the opposite, because I think, as most of Parker knows, the inner roadwork of that area has been not harmonious, and it has needed funding. And I think that building out in that area is only going to benefit the surrounding neighbors. So I definitely look forward to, to that. And then, lastly, undue pollution, be it air noise and water. I think you've already addressed that with your previous business for the last 12 years. You've got a handle on that. I will state that your, your criteria answers were very thorough. I appreciated that very, very much. Your team did a, well, good job. If you're doing it yourself, then you're more than a vet, because that was well done. Thank you for asking, answering any questions that I think could have came up. That was a very thorough answer, so thank you, sir.
Great. Councilmember Hendricks?
I can't follow that, I'm good.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion on this application.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Old Town filing, First Amendment, 1A, Amendment to Lot Four, a use by special view based upon the staff findings contained in the staff report.
Is there a second?
Do you all second?
All right.
I just let the record reflect that the, that the council action form has six conditions, and those are what you're referring to.
Excellent. So sustained?
Yes, yep.
Excellent.[1728.11]